Looks like the council's all here and...
You have to leave the county.
Everybody's coming to marry you now.
The mayor, everybody. We've got the TV station, C-C-M-P. There's Mayor Saylor, I think he may be getting ready to address the room. Let me sit around here. We've got a good... A good crowd here, it looks like. Supporters.
I'll order the special call to City Council meeting for Monday, February 3rd.
Well, we got culture, yes. Danny Dean's late, yes. Danny Murray, it's Johnny Pendleton.
Yeah.
Dr. Rice.
Here.
Penny Robinson.
Here.
Fred Rogers.
Here.
Dorothy Seisman.
Here.
Okay, well, the meeting is called about. We had some people who was interested in purchasing the theater, the old Manchester Theater building. It is for sale now. And it may not be ever again, you know. Somebody may get a hold of it, tear it down with the churches. Got another church here wanting to move to. And they need to sell this one to buy the other churches they're moving to. So, anybody got any questions, discussions?
About buying the building?
Yeah.
Number one, how many men... Has it been appraised?
No. We're just...
Have you had it checked for asbestos?
Uh, no. This is the first meeting, we got to, you know... We got to start somewhere, and this is just the first meeting that we've had on it.
How would we buy this, George?
Uh, we've got a million dollars in the bank.
We've got a promise zone coming in, and if we don't have money to match, to get a program in here to get jobs, we won't get anything.
Well, we ain't gonna spend a million dollars on the theater.
Have you ever had a hundred dollar bill and broke it?
Yeah.
None of it left, is there?
Yeah, I'm tight with it.
How much do they want for the building?
Well, that's...we'd have to discuss that in the conversation. But what we called the meeting for the most tonight was just see if there was any interest in it. And to go look at the area that it is open, he's back there. That'll take us a tour of it. And the building will be... It's had a lot of work done to it. Tomorrow, it could be playing put on in it, or it could be singing, or whatever. Could be done tomorrow, it's in that good of shape. I mean, it's not...ain't no one shape, but it's in pretty good shape.
Um, who's gonna pay for the heating? Who's gonna pay for the air conditioning? Who's gonna clean the buildings? I know you girls aren't gonna get out there and be doing cleaning for that building, you know, because I...
Give us a chance!
I clean windows in town!
Give us a chance!
Well, hold that.
I mean, there's a lot of things, because we've got enough albatrosses around our neck. The Wild Hoppers and the Albatross. And I think the concept is good, I love the committee. But I cannot see spending the taxpayers' money, the city of Manchester, when we hear, "We're broke, we're looking for money," you know. I have got priorities. Let me finish. I've got priorities other than the theater. I have priorities with the swimming pool. I'm so anxious to get this fish hatchery going. I think there are things that are really, really important for the people of Manchester. I think that this is good PR. I think that getting the building is wonderful. But this is not the time for us to spend money. And I am not for breaking the CD. That's all we have. That is our safety net. If we had a catastrophe, what would we do? Well, that's all we have. We had three CDs one time, and now we have one for a million dollars. And to me, this right now is not a good thing for us to even think about purchasing.
It's not gonna be a loss, it's gonna be a profit.
Uh, CDs that we have, there's been no CDs cashed in in the last years and years. We still got all the CDs.
How many CDs we got then?
Well, three, she says.
Well, we've been waiting to break, we have one. Where did the other two come from?
Look at your audit, Johnny.
Where did it come from?
Look at your audit, Johnny.
We got one.
Now that you want...I got some comments on the audit.
And then we got Ronnie PNC.
My comment is, why would we sit here and discuss buying it when we never looked at it?
Well, we're going to go look at it in a few minutes. You can tell. In a few minutes, we're gonna look at it. This is just the first meeting on it. And we have to look at it, and you gotta look at it, and you gotta start discussing it someplace. I mean, I know some people on yours against doing anything for anything, any period, or for anything, you know, make it whatever it is. But we gotta do something to...we're gonna always be the same. Everybody grabs, "We're the same, we're the same, we're the same." We ain't got nothing. We're never gonna have nothing as long as the City Council sits here and don't go for changes.
Well, is there anyone who can get a grant?
Well, I'm money out there.
I'm like Penny, I'm not for cashing any of our CDs in for the theater.
Would this be...would this also...but this theater would benefit our youth, correct? It would also be a movie theater?
Yes, it could be a movie theater, we could have a...
If we're buying it for the stay in Clay, they have two events a year. What are we gonna do the other times they're not used? Who's gonna pay for the electric?
It has to be...
It's a bad time for us, we've got election coming up, and why would we tie the hands of someone, maybe a new mayor, with a hundred thousand dollar bill?
Well, we got the hundred thousand dollars to pay for it.
Drop in the bucket. We got it just paid for if you don't spend it.
Oh.
See, the way I feel about it...
Stay in Clay's eight hundred seventy-four, remember Strong?
People, you all don't know how I really appreciate what the stay in Clay community does.
Appreciate it, vote for it. Because we need something like that in Manchester. Don't be like the Old Town and tear everything down and bury it in some pile somewheres. Restore it and have some hope for these kids. You don't have to use it just for stay in Clay.
Well, that's what you use it for, Rodney.
You can have all kinds of things, and you can have concerts in it, you can have plays in it, you can have...
Show movies.
Spings in it.
Yeah, we're not moving.
You can use it as a place to, when you bring people in to show them Manchester, take 'em over and show 'em that theater and what we've done for this city.
Why don't you talk about...
Why would the city do that?
Why don't you say the limits?
Why not? Is that what they want, a hundred thousand dollars?
Just a hundred thousand.
Is that what they said, a hundred thousand?
That's the number that's floating around, yeah. Make it cheaper. But not move.
So, that's what they said, a hundred thousand, so nobody's never able to negotiate.
We don't know, but we... It ain't official. We don't take politics out of it.
So, nothing they can negotiate in it? Politics is not in it for me. It's not with...
It sounds like politics tonight.
Listen, we don't have many buildings in town.
That's your opinion.
If we buy every building, there's gonna be no taxes come in. There gonna be no town.
We don't get...
This is why...
At least since the building is more utilized and beautified...
We went to... We went to Cochran, Georgia. A theater down there brings in 2.5 million dollars a year.
Do the city own it?
The city is one-third...I don't know if they do or not. It's in city limits. But I would think they do. But it's one-third the size of Manchester. They were suffering just like Manchester. That town was drying up until some people got together, got out of politics, and got hope to do something different than has always been done in Manchester. We want something different. We wanna move forward, not backwards.
Rodney, I wanna move forward too, but right now, our...we have...
Well, make a forward move!
Honey, we got taxes, so we can't even collect from people that don't have the money. We...that's not money that we budgeted, that's not money we've ever discussed or anything. Have you ever thought about asking the county to help us? They get the occupational taxes. I mean, it's like, the city has to do everything.
The county probably would help you if you asked, or if we asked. They'd have helped us with everything we asked, because the county is progressive. The city has been progressive. I don't wanna...I mean, I don't know what I was bickering you about when we're about moving Clay County forward. That's what this is all about, moving it forward, moving it in a different direction than it's already, always gone. It's always tie it down and build something new. Fill...put it full of courthouses and lawyers offices. Manchester's dead and drying up unless somebody does something. You gotta start somewheres. It's dead and dying.
I would say that the theater is not just a building. It is just like the swinging bridge. It is memories for people. And I'm not talking about just people in the 30s, 40s, and 50s when the theater first opened. I'm talking about, also, there's younger people that love that theater and would love to see it restored, because they have memories too, just like Ronnie Curry right there. When we had our meeting at...last week at E-K-U campus, our tourism meeting, everybody in the room applauded when we named restoring that theater. And Ronnie said, "That's the first time I saw Smokey and the Bandit." And these memories mean something to people. That's why so many people are happy that we restored the swinging bridge.
And we're not doing it for ourselves, we're doing it for our children. We're...our lights is dimming out. We're getting older. And if we don't do something to try to keep these kids here, give them something, some kind of pride, some place to put on a play. Where do they put on plays at if they have to? They have to go to a church somewheres and beg somebody, let them put a play on. Why can't we be like every other city? You go down to Lexington, you've got an opera house, you've got everything in the world going on down there. Why can't Manchester walk in that same direction?
You can't compare Manchester way, right?
No, you can't. You have to compare Manchester to somebody like Lynch and Harman Canada that's dead and dying. Now, if that's the direction you wanna go, dead and dying, it's up to the City Council, that's what it's up to. You all are in charge.
If it's such a good project, why don't stay in Clay, go over there with Jerry Ricketts and ask for a loan? We sat right out there that day, and they said they had money to loan. Why don't you...why don't stay in Clay go along?
Why does stay in Clay have to save Manchester? Why don't Manchester do something, they're saying? Why is it Manchester, a stay in Clay's job to save Manchester? Why is it stay in Clay's job to beautify Manchester? It's not our job. We're doing it because that's what we want. And there's a whole lot of people behind us that want the same thing. But evidently, our voices are going deaf on people's ears. They don't hear it.
You're doing it at the expense of the city of Manchester.
Well, it's for the city of Manchester, that's what we're talking about, the city of Manchester. And as far as asbestos, if there is a little asbestos in it, there is grants to get it down there. But just minor asbestos. Or you can paint over it, and it's good.
I would love to keep the theater in the county, in the city, rather than go and support a different Leslie County and the different theaters in London and down in Corbin. I think it would be nice to have a theater here in town. Be able to localize our...utilize our own restaurants, and go to a movie, and call it a date night, and keep it local time.
Well, I mean, if you think nobody will come to it, guess what? We've got to change people's mindset. We've got to make people believe that Manchester is good enough to stay in, good enough to eat in, good enough to go to a movie in. If...they need to...we need to change people's mindset. Everybody wants good for here, everybody wants to save Manchester. Well, it's time to put your money where your mouth is. Do something. Support your local businesses.
You have movies in the park?
Eat at your local restaurants.
You have movies in the park? Why not have movies in the theater?
How many memories did you...how many people showed up for Monkey Dumplings out there at the church on Greenborough?
Uh, the first...we had a hundred and fifty seats the first night, and so nobody had a clue what Monkey Dumplings was all about. So, we had...it was about two-thirds full. After the word got out what it was, what it is about, the next night was a sellout crowd. So, we were very encouraged by that. But one thing about it, like Amy said, I think that if we're concerned with these businesses downtown, we've always talked about, how can we get people back into Manchester? How will we get them back into Clay County? You've gotta give them a reason to come back into downtown. We've discussed a farmer's market, or a market day, or something like that. We've got a new little restaurant that's going in on the corner over here. And I'm sure that, you know, people that may come out to a show, or to a talent show, or to a singing, or to a meeting, or just the place over there probably seats, I don't know, a hundred and fifty, two hundred people. I don't know, when you guys go look at it, you can see for yourself. And I'm sure that our little restaurants downtown would love to have the business that that would bring. There's two adjoining offices that are next door that could be used for any number of things. So, I would ask for you to just think out of the box. And I've talked to some of you, and so, that's what I think. And I have said this before, I will work my behind off securing the money to help restore the theater to its grandeur. But you have to have the property first. So, you might wanna say, "Well, we can buy it, give it a year. If Bandad St. Clay doesn't do anything, then we can sell it. It'll be in a lot better...it'll be in a lot better shape. We'll get our money back plus more." But I will...I will tell you that we, as a group, will find the money through grants to restore that theater.
Uh, the Heritage Council, which we got...supposed to have a meeting set up with when we go to Frankfurt. That's where the grants will go through for that particular project. But if we don't...I mean, if it gets gone, it's gonna be gone.
Let me ask the City Council. How many of you City Council members own property in Manchester? In Manchester? Well, why are you wanting your property to dry up with empty buildings, nasty streets, busted out windows? None of us in stay in Clay owns one strap of property in Manchester, I don't think. Is anybody here on property in Manchester?
Why don't we use the Creech Building? We own it, don't we?
The Creech Building is not a theater. Go look at it, it's falling down, and we've let it fall down. Our whole city is falling down. It's crumbling up and falling down, and nobody's giving a hoot.
Wait a minute, you all think I'm against you? I'm not, I'm for you.
Well, that's...
I am, I really am.
Well, we can tell you're for it, Barbara Joe, we know you are. I'm not...I'm not throwing it at...just at you. I am just very much upset that giving the opportunity to move forward, to have something like that for our kids and our grandkids, and there's some people that are going to vote against it and say that it's bad, that lord knows, stay away from it, it's bad. It's gonna hurt Manchester if they purchase that property.
The only thing I see about purchasing the property and it being bad is the fact of taking the money. If we could figure out another way to do something like that to not take the money.
What did Bandad say? Bandad just said, "We will do our best to raise as much money as we can." It might not, but look what we've done so far. Look what we've done so far.
If this is such a great project, and I'm sure it is, why are we...why are you not telling the fiscal court the same thing you're telling us? Why are you asking the city to buy all the expense? Won't you go ask the people?
We're non-profit, we don't have no money.
I ain't talking about that, Rodney.
We're talking about...
Why don't you go ask the fiscal court, will you put up fifty thousand if the city puts up fifty thousand?
Who said we wouldn't? Well, this is the first thing that even just talked about.
The city just gave...I mean, the county just gave the city eight thousand dollars.
They did?
Yes, they did. And a grant for that stage over there for the saltworks. The foundation of this city and county.
I'm glad you told this council to go with it.
And the city is trying to help on the swimming pool thing. I know, I heard about that. I think it's a bunch of bloney, a lot of it is, but anyway. It's...no, it's on the list to be helped, I know for a fact it is. It just wanted to put it to top, and I think their prior...it's all about severance tax not coming in.
Explain to this council how you know all of this?
'Cause I talked to the judge, and I've been at the fiscal court meetings, John. I've not seen you at any of them.
No.
Okay. I mean, I'm not against you guys, I've been here all my life. My family goes back to the late 1700s, so does the wife.
That's neither here nor there.
Yeah, that is here nor there too. I care about this county. We got...we've been here forever. I don't...my kid had to leave and go to Lexington to get a job. And this is something that draws it in. Something like this, anything good helps your county. And this is something to move us forward. This promised thing is gonna bring millions of dollars in there, and you say, "It's just a promise." Well, that's all we got, there's money coming, I'm telling you. It's out there, I don't know who's not asking for it. We've got all kinds of grants, and we've just been in business a year. So, it's there, if we care, we could probably get four or five hundred thousand dollars. And Scott had a good idea, this...Jesus Christ, I love that man. Uh, anyway, but that's another thing, I think it's a great idea, it would definitely... It would bring tourism here unreal, the 200-foot cross. That's getting off the subject. But it's things like that, anything like that, you say, "Well, how's that gonna bring money in?" We...you know, we're not gonna be doing nothing. It...it's just positive things, like this cold cut Georgia thing that they're bringing in over two million dollars profit over all their expenses, and they're no bigger than Manchester. They're one-third the size of Manchester. Well, I said they're no bigger. They got one gas station and one hearty spicy food restaurant. And they started with a dead town and a theater group. That's what they started with, a dead town and a theater group, and people that were willing to work. Willing to work. And I think we have proved ourselves already that we are willing to work. We don't listen, everybody say, "You can't do it, it ain't gonna help, it ain't gonna work, nobody's gonna be wanting to do this or that." We don't listen, if you're nice, there's get behind us, 'cause we'll run over top of you.
Let me say something, that the ultimate decision is gonna be you all's decision, because you all are the City Council. And we, as a group, will respect your decision. Whatever the decision is, we'll continue to work just as hard as we have in the past. We'd love to have the theater to work with, just to show what we can do. But if you decide that that's not in the best interest of the city, and it's not in the best interest of the county, then so be it. That's my view.
I agree.
That's a wonderful thought.
I agree.
I think that it is a good project, I think you all have done wonderful. I'm really proud that the group that you all have done, what you've done. I saw Monkey Dumpling, I'd like to be a part of it, you know, just running it all in. But right now, to take all that money out of the city, I just don't think...
What good is it doing before it's at? How long has it...how long have we had a swimming pool? Okay, let me ask you. How long have you had eight hundred thousand more budget in the City Council budget? How long have you had it?
Your mind, we're talking about the...we're talking about the CD we got.
Well, how long has the CD been laying over there?
Uh, ten, twelve years.
Okay, well, what good is it doing? You're laying over there some worth in a bank.
Since they're quite pretty thick.
Well, I mean, can I say something?
It don't run much. If it's like mine, it's running about .75.
Well, that's more than we're getting. We're getting .5 last year.
Twelve.
Time, and it's .55 the next year.
It's just the money, and to me, that's a safety net. If we had a catastrophe, we would have nothing to back it up on.
Well, let me tell you...
You do a grant, you need money to back it up.
The city is headed for a catastrophe, because as long as we have people making decisions that are not positive, that are looking at, "Let's let it go the way it's been 100 years." Let's let it go. Let's just let it dry up, let people leave, let people come to Manchester and dry foot and don't wanna turn and look left or right because they're afraid of seeing dirt and busted out windows and paint and rundown buildings, empty buildings. Why would anybody wanna come to Manchester? Let me ask any of you. Why would anybody wanna come to Manchester? This theater may give them a reason to come to Manchester.
Rodney, we've agreed with the Wild Hopper. We heard the same spiel.
The Wild Hopper was a disaster, and I think everybody was fooled by Wild Hopper.
Well, everybody knows the Wild Hopper.
Yeah, but your paper said it was the savior of the world.
No.
Yes, they did, George, yes, they did.
But we report, we're not allowed to say anything. The paper reports what people tell us.
You need to report the truth, what you need to report.
Can I say something?
Yes, go ahead, I'll keep everybody else quiet.
Well, anyhow, if, you know, the girls talking about going to...over to talk with the magistrates and whatever, seeing what they can get. It's...this is just now groundwork, we just started today on this before everybody gets excited, and everybody's got their opinion, and I don't mind who. But what I think we should do, we should try to say, if you can make...get you some contributions, try to make an effort and try to work with them.
What gets sold between them then?
Well, maybe you can go talk to them and say you could work with them.
I don't get no people, I just know they're wanting to sell, it's a church.
Maybe somebody that...who owns it?
It's a church.
Who's been negotiating? Okay.
Right here's a guy that owns the theater. I don't think he's gonna hold it for us while we sit here alone.
Let him speak.
Let's see what they...let me see what we can...let's see what the county...
Let's wait, let Betty finish talking.
Okay.
Let's see what...what I'm trying to say, let's see what we can find. Let's see what you can find with the county. Let's see what we can come up with. And then, it's just not close the door, Sharon, and say, "Well, I'm not gonna do this, or I'm not gonna do that." Let's work with this and see what we can do.
I agree.
And then, we can make that decision.
But I was just wondering what people said at the first, and I thought they had already slammed the door shut, Betty.
Well, I'm not saying anything, 'cause you all are letting me...
What I'm just saying, I thought everybody had already slammed the door shut on it. I thought everybody trying to do something to do it.
I think everybody needs to think what, you know, what we can maybe do. If we can go and...and you all can go over there and get so much, if I might, if you get 50% of it, or then we...you know, there's people, like you all say, there's people that might want to make contributions to help you. Because like you say, there is one people that's interested in keeping things.
There's a lot of people that care about Clay County, but you know, most of them don't live here.
No.
Most of the money that we have got to do everything we have done has come from people that love Clay County.
Well, you know, like I was thinking, you know, when they built up the hospital, I don't know how many dollars my kid's come home and get to get a dollar to buy a brick. You know, even get children involved, because they can be very...
I'll tell you, if we buy it, do we own it, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, you buy it, you get on it, you have to take...when you buy it, you own it. And then...
So, the city don't want no part of it?
Well, no, I didn't say that now, honey. I said, "Well, let's try to see what we can get." Because if they can come up with 50%, if we come up with 50%, or somebody else comes up with a third, the profits will be done.
I thought they said we already was gonna come up with 50%.
No, I didn't.
No, they said we'd ask for it.
You could ask for it. But what I'm saying, like, this is just the first meeting, like, this is the groundwork. We've discussed it, nobody's got no dead set in mind, as far as I know. Nobody's said no...
Well, let me ask one question, I'll be quiet. How many of you City Council members have even went over there and went inside and looked at it? Hold your hand up.
I'm not, because I didn't know nothing about it.
We've been invited to go.
We didn't know that.
How are you making your decisions?
Have you been through it?
I have. How are you just making your decisions and you've not even looked at it?
We're not making the decision, we're just...
Well, we're not gonna make a decision and not look at it, that's...
Everybody, I'm just saying...
We're quitting the cart in front of the horse. We're already talking about paying for it, and we...
And they worked at it.
Well, wait a minute, to me, you would have to look at it, get an appraisal.
Right.
Come up with a price before you worry about who's gonna pay for it and where the grant money is. Because until you've got a set price and a contract on it, it does you no good. But you worry about where the money's coming from, because if you don't have a price on it, what, you're wasting your time anyway.
Jimmy, I'm agreeing with you totally. I agree with everything you're saying, that's what we ought to do. I'm just saying that I thought from the opening quotes that was made at the City Council meeting that the door had already been slammed shut on it. Nobody's...
I don't know how you heard that.
Who made that move?
The door shut, and then you even got nine...
Here's one, John.
You said that you...
We can run the tape back and see what we're saying.
Yeah, we'll be back soon.
I don't know, maybe I'm just a little bit hard, because it's not gonna help us.
When did I say that, John?
It's on record.
Let's type of this right now till we go and look at this and see what...
I'd like to hear a motion that we move over to the theater.
What about the swimming pool?
Well, we can come do that when we come back. Or do you wanna do the swimming pool then?
Let's do the swimming pool then, I've got two dollars for it.
Okay. We're still gonna have to come back.
Can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
The reason why we're in a...well, we're not in a hurry, but there's another church for sale right up the street here. And he's wanting to sell it. Morris Thompson is wanting to sell his building. And it's...we wasn't intending on selling the theater, never was. And then, this deal came up, and there's a church available. And we really don't wanna move out of Manchester, you know, so... I don't know how long that's gonna be for sale, maybe for sale for a year, I don't know. May not be, I don't...I don't know. So... And there is things that need to be done at the theater, you know, it's old.
How much have you asked him?
Well, he's wanting a hundred thousand for his, and we would like to get a hundred thousand for ours. And if we can't, y'all, if it's too much...
I don't see a hundred thousand in it, isn't it?
Well, that's up to you all, you know, that's what he's wanting for his, and so, that's the deal. You can buy his, it's a new building.
You'd have him for a hundred thousand dollars.
They ain't... Oh, the building. The, uh, the building. His building, he, they've got, he tells me they got close to that in it, because they, they bought the building, they put, uh, bought new seats and put in, they put a new roof on it, and painting and remodeling and this and that, uh, which I talked to the fellow they bought it from this morning, and, and he verified that probably that was, that was pretty close to what they had in.
It is, yeah.
I don't think the city would even consider doing it without an appraisal.
No, not at all.
And without seeing if it has asbestos in it, without seeing if it has mold in it?
Well, you don't have to get inspected, that, that comes along with it.
We need the industrial hygienist to look at the building.
And that's not being against you all, because that's, that's been for your safety, that's really for your all's safety.
Part of it, we just want to look at it, open mine, go look at it, see what you think, look at the possibilities of doing something with it.
Okay, I'd like to say something, I'm in a hard spot, my mother's on City Council, I'm gonna stay in Clay. Stay in Clay wants a good future for Clay, Clay County, and we see potential in the building, you all see reality, we need to respect each other's wishes, keep your tempers in check, need to hold your tongue, and we just need to see if we can work together, if we can't, that's fine, but we just need to respect each other's wishes.
I agree.
Good job, Maggie.
Thank you.
I appreciate what my daughter said, but I would like for the young man that's family to show them there where I said that we wasn't going to buy the building, that the mayor absolutely lied as he usually does.
And I didn't say it either, you said, I said it too, I said, I didn't watch, I was worried about the city.
If we're gonna take politics, I must take it out in this council.
Well, the tapes. Like I say, if we're going to do what they started and start from groundwork and see what works out.
I wanna say one other thing, I will help you all any way you can, and I will go and ask for money, uh, go with you to ask for money, I will not vote for us to break a CD. Because that's all we've got left, to bring in the promise of.
If a catastrophe come, what?
If we can come up with it another way, which I think we can, I think we can.
I'm just saying, what if something wants to happen, if, if these CDs unbreakable, what if something come up that you had to break it? And what if you had ten, hundred thousand, a hundred thousand ones instead of a million dollars, or, hey, that's just kind of a mindset to me a little bit, uh, if you said you weren't gonna break the CD and use no money, you said you weren't gonna buy it out of city funds, how, what else does that mean, if you're not gonna use your money, how could you ever buy anything?
Well, maybe you club with some.
What's that?
He has a budget besides.
I know he's got a budget.
Budget, you gotta have money, though, you can put anything in the budget, but you gotta have money to back it up with, uh, let's go to the, uh.
Or you collect some of the taxes we have.
Do what?
The taxes, we've got passed, there's a lot of people going, owe taxes, and we might collect taxes.
Oh, well, that ain't, that's a drop in budget for what we need, anyway, uh, the,
uh. Let me suggest that somebody, either from St. Clair or from the city, contact the mayor of Lancaster, uh, Lancaster's in Garrett County, right over beside Danville, Stanford and that area, uh, I know that they just bought and renovated and opened a theater building, that was an old movie theater, I don't know that it had the historical significance of being a stone building like ours or not, but it was worth saving to them. I think what the activists that want to do something, and the realists who wonder how you're gonna do it from, or what you're gonna do it from, the disconnect is that there's not a plan, if you can get the guy in Lancaster to show you his, and I, I don't think it's fair to compare us to Iceland, Iceland did the same thing with their palace theater, uh, uh, but there are other communities that have done this, lots of times we don't have a business plan, and what I worry about for the theater is, I started to buy that when we bought the place that became Foxhalla and then the prison, and the theater was available, uh, Johnny Cottle ended up buying it, uh, uh, her grandfather, uh, bought it from Ferguson's, who lived down in, uh, Daytona Beach, Principal Ferguson of the high school here years ago, and they bought it from him, uh, the, the people in between that owned it couldn't generate enough traffic flow as a theater against multi-stream theaters in Corbin and London to make it work, now, as a concert venue, as a meeting venue, that is what the ought potential is to turn it, you could turn it into a Friday night in the park kind of free movie, but as a business making money, it's probably really kind of a long shot, but if you can get their business plan, it would give these people something that they could look at and determine if it's, if it's feasible or not.
The only thing that, uh, we're basing it on Scott is Cold Cut, Georgia, again, I keep saying that, they're, they got a two-hundred-seat, uh, facility that they bring in two and a half million dollars to the city.
Linda wanted to see L D votes, four guys who sing opera, made me drive her all the way to Alpharetta, Georgia, anybody ever heard of Alpharetta, Georgia? It's in the middle of nowhere and there ain't nothing there, but it's within thirty minutes of Atlanta and ten minutes of Macon, not Macon, but Marietta, they have a population density.
Not Cold Cut.
That, uh, that made it work at Alpharetta, I don't know.
Cold Cut's two hundred miles from there first.
It's amazing that they were able to pull it off then without that population, uh, density, but I do believe there's a businessman out there for exactly what you all want to do, the work's already done, they've already gotten the grants, they pulled it off.
Let me ask you this, though, why should St. Clay save Manchester, give me one reason?
I think so you should.
Well, I'm, you're saying that we could, you're saying that we could do, why can't we have cooperation, why can't the city try to save its city?
Uh, I, I think, I think if, if you, if you look at what we're up against right now, that the Y M T thing hung around the city's neck, it has really restricted the city's ability to do anything, we've got a million dollar debt almost, and we've got a five hundred thousand dollar lawsuit, that's a million five hundred thousand dollars that the city don't have, CDs are none, and it's not, it's not that anybody here, I, I will respectfully take exception, that I know every member of this council wants to be progressive, but they've gotta have something to be progressive with, and we're in the hole right now.
If you're in the hole, you need people in here in every one of these buildings, you need to fill every building down there with a business thing, but, but with people, how am I gonna do it, who said that?
I didn't.
Well, how does any place do it? What kind of incentives you have for any business coming to Manchester, what are the incentives?
You think this council ain't been trying to do that for years?
Well, what incentive do you have, if I'm gonna come to Manchester, what can I expect?
Let me tell you what they did in Paducah.
I wanna know what Manchester does first, what is Manchester?
Well, Paducah is an example of what can be done, you have some empty buildings, that's true, Paducah had an empty district, they turned it into, they bought it, they turned, they renovated all the buildings, and they gave all these, uh, uh, people that did weaving, carving, painting, they gave them one year free.
Amen.
One year for taxes.
Amen.
And then they started paying for their buildings.
Okay, let's look at that.
And they renovated that place, but if you count them up, we've not got that many empty buildings here in town to work with, look at, how, where are they?
If, if, well, they're, they've turned into slums, they've got people living in most of them.
But I don't think that there's one building on the square, there's, there's only one store around on the back side that's open over here across from Kentucky Mountain House, and one or two of those stores.
Well, let me ask you this thing, how many people, what?
There's six, right over here.
I just wanna say, how many people shop in Manchester? Where do you shop at?
For what?
In Manchester, in Manchester, not Clay County, in Manchester, how many people shop in Manchester here?
I shop in Manchester.
Where do you shop at?
I shop at Versilis, I shop at I G A, that's, that's Manchester.
But if you go, if, if you go to any restaurant in London, it's packed with people from Manchester, you go to Walmart, it's packed with people from Manchester, you go to Lowe's, it's packed with people from Manchester, people in Manchester don't have no reason to shop in Manchester, there's nothing here, and as long as people don't want nothing here, you're never gonna have nothing here. Give somebody a reason, come here and open up a store, or open up a deli, or open up.
I don't, I don't disagree with you, but now let me ask you something, it's easy to say, give people a reason, let me ask you for those reasons, what are they?
I don't know, you said, well, I guess I give them free rent or something?
Well, there's, there's a rent, there's a, there's a rent incentive.
Free water?
There's tax incentives, and there could be something like free utilities, but what else, that would bring enough people to shop?
A theater maybe would bring them down here?
It, when it was open as a theater, it did.
It didn't, you're talking about, uh, theaters not been open in here, Scott, thirty years ago?
No, 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 no.
Okay, how long's there been open?
Eighteen year ago.
But I mean, it wasn't, no, it was.
Your, your real dilemma is to put in digital broadcast equipment and, and cameras and stuff, the, the, the projectors and all, talking about probably a quarter of a million dollars to make that place able to show today's movies.
I don't, I don't think they're talking about a whole lot of showing movies, I think they're talking about having plays and, and concerts and, uh, uh, gospel singing and, and, uh, stuff like that, and, and it don't have to be a moneymaker, it just don't need to be a loser.
That's true.
Hey, y'all wanna tell the city council, we do that every Sunday, gospel music, if y'all wanna come, y'all, if the law will stay in town, they come to church, we do gospel music.
It's free.
And it's free, yeah.
I'm gonna show that, like I say, uh, I do feel passionate for Manchester, it is my home, I would love to see it do better than it's doing right now, and it's never gonna do any better until you get people that want it to do better, and they have to work at it to make it do better, you can't be satisfied with what is happening in Manchester, you can't, you can't be satisfied and say, I think Manchester's heading in the right direction, you gotta do something different, that's, I'm gonna let you, like I say, I don't have no property down here, I don't have no dog in the fight, what I do is I'm doing out of the goodness of my heart to make Manchester a more beautiful place, a place that people might want to come and spend the evening, spend a weekend, or something like that, come for an event, but I can't do it, St. Clay can't do it, I mean, it's gonna take everybody getting together, fighting for the same thing, fighting for the same cause, joining hands, saying, hey, let's all get together.
One hundred percent, I do agree with you, but it's gonna take everybody out of it.
But I would say devil's advocate, that we can't expect him to hand money blindly over without him looking at the situation.
I think you have to pin down a price.
Thank you, Jimmy, at least one of you is sensible.
And then go after grant, and then see if you can come up with a, the way back.
I agree, but don't let St. Clay be the savior, don't let, we listen, we can't be the savior of Manchester.
Let me, let me tell you one thing, too, the reason where, where we at right now, because everything that comes up, let's get a grant, I mean, that's all you hear, is get a grant, we gotta do something with it for itself, I mean, that's, that's one thing that has to be done, okay, let's, let's go on to the swimming pool, prior to the swimming pool, okay, we applied for a grant, land and water grant, for seventy-five thousand dollar matching, they called Senator Stivers, told him we'd got it, he called me and told me we got it, and then, six weeks later, we got a notice, they turned it down, okay, uh, we tried it, applied for a C D B G grant for a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, guess what, I was almost assured that we was gonna get it, guess what, we got a letter, it's turned down, so we got nothing going up the pool right now.
Do we have the seventy-five thousand that he set aside, Lord?
That's, that's through the county judge.
Yeah, well.
We don't have it yet.
Does that give you a reason for why the, uh, grants were turned in?
We not got the motive, we got, on the, uh, the one did, the seventy-five thousand, uh, because, uh, uh, they had more projects, they had.
Were, were there your projects defined what we had?
But now, the, uh, the hundred and seventy-five thousand one, we've not got the actual official letter on it yet, uh, but we was told, and this is not, it's not that the grants wouldn't fill that right, because, uh, we got a consultant firm, professionals that filled out the grants, but anyway, that's where we are on the pool.
What places were we turned down, what they said?
Well, we not got the notes, the official.
How do they know we're turned down then?
Cause they called them and they said, we.
They called you?
But they told you, you're turned down, didn't tell you why?
Uh, she said they're not gonna send a C D B G grant, she said that, uh, she had had a conference with some of them and they told her, there's like, well, Manchester's not got their letter, you know, have they got the grant, and he said, no, said there was, there was more priorities ahead, so, I say cash, I say use the pool for people's, what I say.
Why didn't we go down there?
Well, well, we was, we was pretty much told by Robert that they would be funded.
Well, now, the judge says he's gonna give seventy-five thousand dollars in February, this is February.
Well, he, this is February, he ain't giving us nothing, it's our money, he's just prioritizing it where we can get it.
Well, I mean, Robert brought the money.
Yeah.
And it's prioritized, he, he dropped the prioritizing to a lower number than what it was, it was number three.
Yeah.
But he says that he will come up with it in February.
Yeah.
This is February.
Yeah, but the seventy-five thousand dollars, it's not enough to get started on the pool.
We have to take, still take something, they need to pick the pool, and I think that, I think the cities, the citizens in county, city, wherever, that's all we've heard, is please fix that pool, cause there's a lot of kids that really enjoy that, and we've got that campground down there, those parents have called, they're like, you know, we would camp all summer long if you all had the pool ready so people could play, I say do it for the, the youth and the kids in the city, in the county, city, wherever, I don't care, just work together.
Well, do we have the funds and not cashing in the CDs to do the pool?
We had it, we done had it, yes.
No, there's not.
I mean, you're supposed to remember, uh, since I've been here, we've not had an increase in nothing, thank, there's not been an increase in nothing, snow White, except the water rates, uh, and on the insurance rate, uh, Art Rice said it in nineteen sixty-three, it's the same, been the same since then.
You ain't increased the bar, though.
Yeah.
We in terrible land. Yeah.
If you, if you would annex some territory, you could have enough tax dollars to, to do some of this stuff.
Don't mention it.
No, it's a tradition, I mean, that's what way you get money to do things with, that's how you build your population, there's no question about it.
Does Promise Never Make in allocate any funds?
Well, they just got a promise so far, it's just a promise.
But now, there will be some money coming out of government, government initiative.
But you gotta have the matching funds to get it.
That's most likely.
We need to start on the pool though, if we want it open by summer, it needs to be stored, we need to get preparation and get it open for these kids, that's going to take quite a while to get it.
Do we have, we try some money?
Uh, it's about a hundred fifty, around a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
We would try to, we'd do the beds, but it was like.
What was Robert talking about when he told me he had given, I, I jumped him over the pool, and he said, well, I, I gave George extra money.
Yeah, it's a seventy-five thousand dollars, but we ain't got it.
No, not that, he said he gave, he gave the city more money.
No, he didn't, we've not got anything directly from Robert, direct, it's all coming.
Yeah, we need to ask Robert again, cause he told, said, when I said to ju, you need to tell the judge he needs to give us that money, and he said, well, I've already helped George something on insurance, what'd he do?
I have no idea.
Well, when we go to city night, we need to, we need to get Robert over and say, tell us what's going on.
They try.
And again, that's a week from tomorrow night.
You need, you need, oh, in a private meeting, you do not need to try to get these answers from Robert's at city meeting, it'll be too wild, you need to, you need to.
No, I never said get it from him, I said talk to him back, Scott.
No, I know, I didn't, I said, I don't think you can get that kind of information on a night like that, you need to call him and give him a chance to come sit down with you and ask him in a calm atmosphere, at that big meeting, you know, I'll, you'll get You know, you'll get promises and I'll hope to help and I'll do anything I can and he'll make it, but it's not fair to really try to focus on.
He's supposed to, we, we, uh, he's supposed to set up, set us up to meet with some people that does give the grants that day of the City Nights sometime or other. And we, I did contact today, we just heard this last Friday evening, about the other grants and I did email today and he's not emailed back yet, to see what's going on.
Well, could we set an appointment with him like Wednesday afternoon?
Well, that's what I just got through saying.
I know. Well, we got a large delegation that's gonna be there, and that would be good. Stay in Clay's gonna be down there, I'm assuming some of you are, so that, you know, that would be...
Well, I tell you why we didn't get the grant. There's places that have lobbies, and they go and lobby for that money. And if we don't go down there and try to get that money and make a contact, you won't get it.
Uh, I figured it was Robert.
We feel like we got Robert down there, but he's got the whole state.
Yeah, I know. But he, he told us very, pretty much that we was gonna get it, just like he's told these other girls on this money they applied for, he's told them they're gonna get it too, but I wonder now if they're gonna get it or not.
Well, we don't know what's gonna come until the budget comes out.
True.
We need to wait to see what's in the budget.
Lobby spend a lot.
You know, that's just, I think that's solid. I mean, you know, it really does. Well, that's what they get paid for. I don't think about the money they spend.
That's all I've got on the swimming pool and the other building. We gonna go up there and look at the building?
Yes, we're going, Scott.
Let's go.
Mayor, do you intend to reconvene after you look at the building?
We need, we need a motion to a jury. A jury and...
You don't have to vote on a jury.
Well, we're not jarring him all the way, we're just wanting a jury to go to the...
Well, he gonna ask you what you're gonna do.
So, we're coming back here, Brad.
Jack, we are coming back here.
Barbara J. Ocher. Dr. Rice, Dr. Rice. Penny Robinson, we're adjourned.
Looks like the council's all here and... The mayor, everybody. We got the TV, TV station, CCMP. There's Mayor Selder. I think he may be getting ready to address the room. Let me stood around here. We've got a good, a good crowd here, it looks like. Supporters.
I want to order the special call of city council meeting for Monday, February the third.
Barbara J. Ocher, yes. Dan Hensley, yes. Betty Murray, yes. Janet Pendleton, yes. Dr. Rice, here. Penny Robinson, here. Fred Rogers, here. Dorothy Seisman, here.
Okay, well, the meeting is called about. We had some people who was interested in purchasing the theater, the old Manchester Theater Building. It is for sale now, and it may not be ever again, you know. Somebody may get a hold of it, tear it down, but the church has got another church they're wanting to move to, and they need to sell this one to buy the other church they're moving to. So, anybody got any questions, discussions?
About buying the building?
Yeah.
Number one, how many, has it been appraised?
No, we're just...
Have you had it checked for asbestos?
Uh, no. This is the first meeting. We got to, you know, we gotta start somewhere, and this is just the first meeting that we've had on it.
How would we buy this, George?
Uh, we got a million dollars in the bank.
We got a promise zone coming in, and if we don't have money to match, to get a program in here to get jobs, we won't get anything.
Well, we ain't gonna spend a million dollars on a theater.
Have you ever had a hundred dollar bill and broke it?
Yeah.
None of it left, is there?
Yeah, I'm tight with it.
How much do they want for the building?
Well, that's, we'd have to discuss that in conversation. But what we call the meeting for the most tonight was just see if, if there was any interest in it and to go look at the theater. It is open, he's back there. We had to take some tour of it. And the building will be, uh, it's had a lot of work done to it. Tomorrow, it could be playing put on in it, there could be singing or whatever. Could be done tomorrow. It's in that good shape. I mean, it's not, ain't no one shape, but it's in pretty good shape.
Who's gonna pay for the heating? Who's gonna pay for the air conditioning? Who's gonna clean the buildings? I know you girls aren't gonna get out there and be doing the cleaning for that, you know, for nothing.
Give us a chance.
I clean windows sometimes.
Give us a chance.
Well, hold that.
I mean, there's a lot of things, because we've got enough albatrosses around our neck, the wild, the wild hoppers and albatross. And I think the concept is good. I love the committee, but I cannot see spending the taxpayers' money, the city of Manchester, when we hear we're broke, we're looking for money, you know. I have got priorities. Let me finish. I've got priorities other than the theater. I have priorities with the swimming pool. I'm so anxious to get this fish hatchery going. I think there are things that are really, really important for the people of Manchester. I think that this is good PR. I think that getting the building is wonderful, but this is not the time for us to spend money. And I am not for breaking the CD. That's all we have. That is our, our safety net. If we had a catastrophe, what would we do? Well, that's all we have. We had three CDs one time, and now we have one for a million dollars. And to me, this right now is not a good thing for us to even think about purchasing.
It's not gonna be a loss, it's gonna be a profit.
Uh, CDs that we have, there's been no CDs cashed in in the last years and years. We still got all the CDs.
How many CDs we got there?
Well, three, she says.
Well, we've been led to believe we had one. Where did the other two come from?
Look at your audit, John.
Where did it come from?
Look at your audit, John.
Now, did you, I got some comments on the, on the audit.
And then we got Ronnie D N C.
My comment is, why would we sit here and discuss buying it when we never looked at it?
Well, we're, we're going to go look at it in a few minutes. In a few minutes, we're gonna look at it. This is just the first meeting on it. And we have to look at it, and you gotta look at it, and you gotta start discussing it someplace. I mean, I know some people on yours against doing anything for any thing, any period or for anything, you know, make it whatever's what it is. But we gotta do something to, we're gonna always be the same. Everybody grabs, we're the same, we're the same, we're the same. We ain't got nothing. We're never gonna have nothing as long as the city council sits here and don't go for changes.
Well, is there anyone who can get a grant? Or anybody out there?
I'm like Penny, I'm not for cashing any of our CDs in for the theater.
Would this be, would this also, but this theater would be a huge, correct? It would also be a movie theater?
Yes, it could be a movie theater. We could have a...
If we're buying it for the Stay in Clay, they have two events a year. What are we gonna do the other times they're not used? Who's gonna pay for the lecture?
It has to be...
It's a bad time for us. We've got election coming up, and why would we tie the hands of someone, maybe a new mayor, with the hundred thousand dollar bill?
Well, we got the hundred thousand dollars to pay.
Drop in the bucket. We got it just paper if you don't spend it. Stay in Clay's eight hundred seventy-four members strong.
People, you all don't know how I really appreciate what the Stay in Clay community does.
If you appreciate it, vote for it. Because we need something like that in Manchester. Don't be like the old town and tear everything down and bury it in some pile somewheres. Restore it and have some hope for these kids. You don't have to use it just for Stay in Clay.
Well, that's what you use it for, Robert.
You can have all kinds of things, that you can have concerts in, you can have plays in, you can have speeches in it. You can use it as a, a place to, when you bring people in to show them Manchester, take them over and show them that theater and what we've done for this city.
Why would the city do that?
My country's in the wind.
Is that what they want, a hundred thousand dollars?
Just a hundred thousand.
Is that what he said, a hundred thousand?
That's the number that's floating around, yeah. Make it cheaper.
So, that's what they said, a hundred thousand. Nobody's never agreed with the negotiation.
It ain't official. We don't take politics out of it.
So, nothing they can negotiate. Politics is not in it for me. It's not with politics.
It sounds like politics tonight.
Listen, we don't have many buildings in town. If we buy every building, there's gonna be no taxes coming. There gonna be no town.
We don't get no...
At least it's a building that's more utilized and beautified.
We went to Coquett, Georgia, a theater down there brings in two point five million dollars a year.
Leave the city on it?
The city is one-third, I, I don't know if they do or not. It's in city limits, but I would think they do. But it's one-third the size of Manchester. They were suffering just like Manchester. That town was drying up until some people got together and got out of politics and got hope to do something different than is, than has always been done in Manchester. We want something different. We wanna move forward, not backwards.
Right, I wanna move forward too, but right now, our, we have...
Well, make a forward move.
Honey, we got challenges that we can't even collect from people that don't have the money. We, that's not money that we budgeted. That's not money we've ever discussed or anything. Have you ever thought about asking the county to help us? They get the occupational packs. I mean, it's like, the city has to do everything.
The county probably would help you if you asked, or if we asked. They've helped us with everything we've asked, because the county is progressive. The city has been progressive. I, I don't wanna, I mean, I don't know what I would bickerings about when we're about moving Clay County forward. That's what this is all about, moving it forward, moving it in a different direction than it's already, always gone. It's always tear it down and build something new, fill, put it full of courthouses and lawyers offices. Manchester's dead and drying up unless somebody does something. You gotta start somewheres. It's dead and dying.
I would say that the theater is not just a, a building. It is just like the swinging bridge. It is memories for people. And I'm not talking about just people in the thirties, forties, and fifties when the theater first opened. I'm talking about, also, there's younger people that love that theater and would love to see it restored, because they have memories too, just like Ronnie Curry, right? When we had our, our, our meeting at, last week at E K U campus, our tourism meeting, everybody in the room applauded when we named restoring that theater. And Ronnie said, that's the first time I saw Smokey and the Bandit. And these memories mean something to people. That's why so many people are happy that we restored the swinging bridge.
And we're not doing it for ourselves. We're doing it for our children. We're, our lights is dimming out. We're getting older. And if we don't do something to try to keep these kids here, give them something, some kind of pride, some place to put on a play. Where do they put on plays at if they have to? They have to go to a church somewheres and beg somebody, let them put a play on. Why, why can't we be like every other city? You go down to Lexington, you've got an opera house, you've got everything in the world going on down there. Why can't Manchester walk in that same direction?
You can't compare Manchester way, right?
No, you can't. You have to compare Manchester to somebody like Lynch and Harp County that's dead and dying. Now, if that's the direction you wanna go, dead and dying, it's up to the city council. That's what it's up to. You all are in charge.
If it's such a good project, why don't Stay in Clay go over there with Jerry Ricketts and ask for a loan? We sat right out there that day and they said they had money to loan. Why don't you, why don't Stay in Clay go there?
Why don't Stay in Clay have to save Manchester? Why don't Manchester do something they're saying? Why is it Manchester, a Stay in Clay's job to save Manchester? Why is it Stay in Clay's job to beautify Manchester? It's not our job. We're doing it because that's what we want. And there's a whole lot of people behind us that want the same thing. But evidently, our voices are going deaf on people's ears. They don't hear it.
Expensive city of Manchester.
It's for the city of Manchester. That's what we're talking about, the city of Manchester. And as far as asbestos, if there is a little asbestos in it, there is grants to get it down there, but just minor asbestos. Or you can paint over it and it's good.
I would love to keep the theater in the county, in the city, rather than go and support a different Leslie County and the different theaters in London and down in Corbin. I think it would be nice to have a theater here in town. Be able to localize our, utilize our own restaurants and go to a movie and call it a date night and keep it, keep it local.
Well, I mean, if you think nobody will come to it, guess what? We've got to change people's mindset. We've got to make people believe that Manchester is good enough to stay in, good enough to eat in, good enough to go to a movie in. They need it, we need to change people's mindset. Everybody wants good for here, everybody wants to save Manchester. Well, it's time to put your money where your mouth is. Do something. Support your local businesses, eat your local restaurants.
You have movies in the park, why not have movies in the theater?
How many, how many memories did you, how many people showed up to Monkey Dumplings out there at the church on Greenborough?
Uh, the first, we had a hundred and fifty seats the first night, and so, nobody had a clue what Monkey Dumplings was all about. So, we had, it was about two-thirds full. After the word got out what it was, what it is about, the next night was a hell of a crowd. So, we were very encouraged by that. But one thing about it, like Amy said, I think that if we're concerned with these businesses downtown, we've always talked about, how can we get people back into Manchester? How would we, can we get them back into Clay County? You've gotta give them a reason to come back into downtown. We've discussed a farmer's market or a market day or something like that. We've got a new little restaurant that's going in on the corner over here, and I'm sure that, you know, people that may come out to a show or to a talent show or to a singing or to a meeting or just, the, the place over there probably seats, I don't know, a hundred and fifty, two hundred people. I don't know. When you guys go look at it, you can see for yourself. And I'm sure that our little restaurants downtown would, would love to have the business that that would bring. There's two adjoining offices that are next door that, that could be used for any number of things. So, I would ask for you to just think out of the box, and, and I've talked to some of you, and, and so, that's what I think. And I have said this before, I will work my behind off securing the money to help restore the theater to its grandeur. But you have to have the property first. So, you might wanna say, well, we can buy, give it a year. If Van and Stay in Clay doesn't do anything, then we can sell it. It'll be in a lot better, it'll be in a lot better shape. We'll get our money back plus more. But I will, I will tell you that we, as a group, will find the money through grants to restore that theater.
Uh, the Heritage Council, which we got, supposed to have a meeting set up with when we go to Frankfurt. That's where the grants will go through for that particular project. But if we don't, I mean, if it gets going, it's, it's gonna be gone.
Let me ask the city council, how many of you city council members own property in Manchester, in Manchester? Well, why are you wanting your property to dry up with empty buildings, nasty streets, busted out windows? None of us in Stay in Clay owns one strap of property in Manchester. I don't think. Is anybody here own property in Manchester?
Why don't we use the Creech Building? We own it, don't we?
The Creech Building is not a theater. You go look at it, it's falling down, and we've let it fall down. Our, our whole city is falling down. It's crumbling up and falling down, and nobody's giving a hoot.
Wait a minute. You all think I'm against you. I'm not, I'm for you.
Well, that's...
I am, I really am.
Well, we can tell you're for, Barbara, Joe, we know you are. I'm not, I'm not throwing it at, just at you. I am just very much upset that given the opportunity to move forward, to have something like that for our kids and our grandkids, and there's some people that are going to vote against it and say that it's bad, that lord knows, stay away from it, it's bad. It's gonna hurt Manchester if they purchase that property.
The only thing I see about purchasing the property and it being bad is the fact of taking the money. If we could figure out another way to do something like that, to not take the money.
What did Van just say? Van just said, we will do our best to raise as much money as we can. It might not, but look what we've done so far. Look what we've done so far.
If this is such a great project, and I'm sure it is, why are we, why are you not telling the fiscal court the same thing you're telling us? Why are you asking the city to borrow all the expense?
We're non-profit, we don't have no money.
I ain't talking about that, Rodney.
We're talking about.
Why don't you go ask the fiscal court, will you put up fifty thousand if the city puts up fifty thousand?
Who said we wouldn't? Well, this is the first thing that anyone just talked about.
The city, I mean, the county just gave the city eight thousand dollars.
They did?
Yes, they did. And a grant for that stage over there for the saltworks. The foundation of this city and county.
I'm glad you told us, Councilor.
And the city is trying to help on the swimming pool thing. I know, I heard about that. I think it's a bunch of bloney, a lot of it is, but anyway. It's, no, it's on, it's on the list to be helped, I know for a fact it is. It just wanted to put it to top. And I think they're, it's all about severance tax not coming in.
How you know all of this?
'Cause I talked to the judge, I've been at the fiscal court meetings, John. I've not seen you at any of them.
No.
Okay. I'm not against you guys, I've been here all my life. My family goes back to the late seventeen hundreds, so does the whites.
That's neither here nor there.
Yeah, that is here nor there too. I care about this county. We got, we've been here forever. I don't, my kid had to leave and go to Lexington to get a job. And this is something that draws it in. Something like this. Anything good helps your county, and this is something to move us forward. This promised thing is gonna bring millions of dollars in earnings, it's just a promise. Well, that's all we got. There's money coming, I'm telling you. It's out there, I don't know who's not asking for it. We've got all kinds of grants, and we've just been, we've just been in business a year. So it's there. If we care, we could probably get four or five hundred thousand dollars. And Scott had a good idea, this Jesus cross, I love that man. Anyway, but that's another thing, I think it's a great idea, it would definitely, it would bring tourism here unreal. Two hundred foot cross. That's getting off the subject. But it's things like that, anything like that, you say, well, how's that gonna bring money in? We, you know, we're not gonna be doing nothing. It, it's just positive things, like this Coquett, Georgia thing, that they're bringing in over two million dollars profit over all their expenses, and they're no bigger than Manchester. They're one third the size of Manchester. I said they're no bigger. They got one gas station and one hearty spicy food restaurant. And they started with a dead town and a theater group. That's what they started with. A dead town and a theater group, and people that were willing to work. Willing to work. And I think we have proved ourselves already that we are willing to work. We don't listen, everybody say, "You can't do it, it ain't gonna help, it ain't gonna work, nobody's gonna be wanting to do this or that." We don't listen. If you're nice, there's get behind us, 'cause we'll run over top of you.
Let me say something, that the ultimate decision is gonna be you all's decision because you all are the city council. And we, as a group, will respect your decision. Whatever the decision is, we'll continue to work just as hard as we have in the past. We'd love to have a theater to work with, just to show what we can do. But if you decide that that's not in the best interest of the city, and it's not in the best interest of the county, then so be it. That's my feeling.
I agree.
That's a wonderful thought.
I agree.
I think that it is a good project. I think you all have done wonderful. I'm really proud that the group, that you all have done, what you've done. I saw Monkey Dumpling. I'd like to be a part of it, you know, just running it all in. But right now, to take all that money out of the city, I just don't think.
What good is it doing you where it's at? How long has it, how long have we had a swing?
We're gonna write.
Okay, let me ask you, how long have you had eight hundred thousand or more budget in your, in the city council budget? How long have you had it?
Your mind, we're talking about the, we're talking about the CD we got.
Well, how long has the city, that day's been laying over there?
Ten, twelve years.
Okay, well, what good is it doing? You laying over there some words in a bank.
Since Doug White put it there.
Well, can I say something?
He don't run much.
If it's like mine, it's running about point seven five.
Well, that's more than we're getting. We're getting point five less time, and it's point five five the next period.
It's just the money, and to me, that's a safety net. If we had a catastrophe, we would have nothing to back it up on.
Well, let me tell you.
You do a grant, you need money to back it up.
The city is headed for a catastrophe. Because as long as we have people making decisions that are not positive, that are looking at, let's let it go the way it's been one hundred years. Let's let it go. Let's just let it dry up, let people leave, let people come to Manchester and dry foot and don't wanna turn and look left or right because they're afraid of seeing dirt and busted out windows and paint and rundown buildings, empty buildings. Why would anybody wanna come to Manchester? Let me ask any of you. Why would anybody wanna come to Manchester? This theater may give them a reason to come to Manchester.
Rodney, we've been heard with the Y-hopper. We heard the same spiel.
The Y-hopper was a disaster, and I think everybody was fooled by Y-hopper.
Well, everybody know the Y-hopper.
Yeah, but your paper said it was the savior of the world.
We report.
Yes, they did, George, yes, they did.
But we report, we're not allowed to say anything. The paper reports what people tell us.
What you need to report.
Rodney, can I say something?
Yes, go ahead. I'll keep everybody else quiet.
Well, anyhow, if, you know, the girls talking about going to, over at the top of the magistrates and whatever, to see what they can get. It's, this is just now groundwork. We just started today on this before everybody gets excited, and everybody's got their opinion, and I don't mind who. But what I think we should do, we should try to say, if you can make, get you some contributions, try to make an effort.
What gets sold between them then?
Well, maybe you can go talk to them and say you can work with them.
I don't know the people, I don't know they're wanting to sell, it's a church.
Maybe somebody that, who owns it.
It's a church.
Who's been negotiating? Okay.
Right here's a guy that owns the theater. I don't think he's gonna hold it for us while we sit here alone.
Let him speak.
Let's see what they, let's see what we can.
Let's wait, let Betty finish talking.
Let's see what, what I'm trying to say, let's see what we can find, let's see what you can find with the county. Let's see what we can come up with. And then, let's just not close the door, Sharon, and say, "Well, I'm not gonna do this, or I'm not gonna do that." Let's work with this and see what we can do.
I agree.
And then, we can make that decision.
But I was just wondering what people said at the first, and I thought they had already slammed the door shut.
I'm not saying anything, cause you all are letting me.
What I'm just saying, I thought everybody had already slammed the door shut on it. I for everybody trying to do themselves a good.
I think everybody needs to think what, you know, what we can maybe do. If we can go and, and you all can go over there and get so much, if you get fifty percent of it, or then we, you know, there's people, like you all say, there's people that might want to make contributions to help you. Because like you say, there is a lot of people that's interested in keeping things.
There's a lot of people that care about Clay County, but you know, most of them don't live here.
No.
Most of the money that we have got to do everything we have done has come from people that love Clay County.
Well, you know, like I was thinking, you know, when they built up the hospital, I don't know how many dollars my kid's come home and get, to get a dollar to buy a brick. You know, even get children involved, because they can be very crazy.
If we buy it, do we own it? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, you buy it, you get on it, you have to take, when you buy it, you own it. And then.
So the city don't want no part of it?
Well, no, I didn't say that now, honey. I said, well, let's try to see what we can get. Because if they can come up with fifty percent, if we come up with fifty percent, somebody else comes up with a third, the profits will be done that way.
I thought they said we already was gonna come up with fifty percent.
No, I didn't.
No, we said we'd ask for it.
You can ask for it. But what I'm saying, like, this is just the first meeting, like this is the groundwork. We've discussed it, nobody's got no dead set now, as far as I know. Nobody said.
Well, let me ask one question, I'll be quiet. How many of you city council members have even went over there, went inside and looked at it? Hold your hand.
I'm not there, cause I didn't know nothing about it.
We've been invited to go.
We didn't know that.
We're going right now. How are you making your decisions? I have. How are you just making your decisions and you not even look at it?
We're not making the decision, we're just trying to.
We're not gonna make a decision and not look at it, that's big stuff.
Everybody, I'll be saying.
We're quitting the cart in front of the horse. We're already talking about paying for it, and we don't even look at it. Well, wait a minute, maybe you would have to look at it, get an appraisal, come up with a price before you worry about who's gonna pay for it and where the grant money is. Because until you've got a set price and a contract on it, it does you no good to worry about where the money's coming from, because if you don't have a price on it, what, you're wasting your time anyway.
Jimmy, I'm agreeing with you totally. I agree with everything you say there. That's what we ought to do. I'm just saying that I thought from the opening quotes that was made at the city council meeting, that the door had already been slammed shut. Nobody's.
Who made that move?
Door shut, and then even that night, you know, what's the call? You said that too.
We can run the tape back and see what we're saying.
When did I say that?
I don't know, you understand, it already says it's not gonna help us.
When did I say that, George?
It's on record.
Let's table this right now, till we go and look at this.
I'd like to hear your motion that we move over to the theater.
What about the swimming pool?
Well, we can come do that when we come back. Or do you wanna do the swimming pool then?
Let's do the swimming pool then, I've got two dollars to throw you back.
Okay. We still gonna have to come back.
Can I, can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
The reason why we're in a, well, we're not in a hurry, but there's another church for sale right up the street here. And he's wanting to sell it. Morris Thompson is wanting to sell his building. And it's, we wasn't intending on selling the theater, never was. And then, this, this deal came up, and there's a church available. And we really don't wanna move out of Manchester, you know, so I don't know how long that's gonna be for sale, maybe for sale for a year, I don't know. May not be, I don't, I don't know. So, and there is things that need to be done at the theater, you know, it's old.
How much have you asked him?
Well, he's wanting a hundred thousand for his, and we would like to get a hundred thousand for ours, and if we can't, y'all, if it's too much.
I don't see how much it's asking in a minute.
Well, that's up to you all, you know, that's what he's wanting for his, and so, that's the deal. You can buy his, it's another real.
You'd have him for a hundred thousand dollars.
The building, his building, he, they've got, he tells me, they've got close to that in it because they, they bought the building, they put, bought new seats and put in, they put a new roof on it, and painting and remodeling and this and that. Which I talked to the fellow they bought it from this morning, and he verified that probably that was, that was pretty close to what they had in.
It is, yeah.
I don't think the city would even consider doing it without an appraisal.
No, not at all. And without seeing if it has asbestos in it, without seeing if it has mold in it.
Well, you don't have to give it inspected, if that comes along with it.
We need the industrial hygienist to look at the building.
And that's not being against you all, because that's, that's being for your safety, that's really for your all's safety.
Barbara, Joe, we just want to just look at it, open mine. Go look at it. See what you think. Look at the possibilities of doing something with it.
Okay, I'd like to say something. I'm in a hard spot. My mind is on city council. I'm gonna stay in Clay. St. Clay wants a good future for Clay, Clay County, and we see potential in the building. You all see reality. We need to respect each other's wishes. Keep your tempers in check, need to hold your tongue, and we just need to see if we can work together. If we can't, that's fine. But we just need to respect each other's wishes.
I agree.
Good job, Maggie.
Thank you.
I appreciate what my daughter said, but I would like for the young man that's standing to show them there where I said that we wasn't going to buy the building, that the mayor absolutely lied as he usually does.
And I didn't say it either, you said I said it too. I said I didn't want, I was worried about the city.
If we're gonna play politics, I must stake it out in this council.
Well, the tapes.
Like I say, if we're going to do it, let's start it and start from groundwork and see what works out. I wanna say one other thing. I will help you all any way you can, and I will go and ask for money, go with you to ask for money. I will not vote for us to break a CD. Because that's all we've got left, to bring in the promise of.
If a catastrophe come, what?
If we can come up with it another way, which I think we can, I think we can.
Let me say, if something was to happen, if these CDs unbreakable, what if something come up that you had to break it? And what if you had ten, hundred thousand, a hundred thousand ones instead of a million dollars? Or, hey, that's just kind of a mindset to me a little bit. If you said you weren't gonna break the CD and use no money, you said you weren't gonna buy it out of city funds. What else does that mean? If you're not gonna use your money, how could you ever buy anything?
Well, maybe you could up with some way.
What's that?
He has a budget.
I know he's got a budget.
Budget, you've gotta have money, though. You can put anything in the budget, but you gotta have money to back it up with. Let's go to the hoop.
What you request on the taxes, we have.
Do what?
The taxes, we've got passed. There's a lot of people want old taxes, and we might collect taxes.
Oh, well, that ain't, that's a drop in budget for what we need. Anyway, the.
Let me suggest that somebody, either from St. Clay or from the city, contact the mayor of Lancaster. Lancaster's in Garrett County, right over beside that, Stanford and that area. I know that they just bought and renovated and opened a theater building. That was an old movie theater. I don't know that it had the historical significance of being a stone building, like ours or not, but it was worth saving to them. I think what the activists that won't do something, and the realists who wonder how you're gonna do it from, or what you're gonna do it from, the disconnect is that there's not a plan. If you can get the guy in Lancaster to show you his, and I don't think it's fair to compare us to Ashland. Ashland did the same thing with their Palace Theater. But there are other communities that have done this. Lots of times, we don't have a business plan. What I worry about for the theater is, I started to buy that when we bought a place that became Fox Hall and then the prison, and the theater was available. Johnny Cottle ended up buying it. Her grandfather bought it from Ferguson's, who lived down in Daytona Beach. Principal Ferguson of the high school, grade school here years ago, and they bought it from him. The people in between that owned it couldn't generate enough traffic flow as a theater against multi-stream theaters in Corbin and London to make it work. Now, as a concert venue, as a meeting venue, that is what the potential is to turn it. You could turn it into a Friday night in the park kind of free movie, but as a business making money, it's probably really kind of a long shot. But if you can get their business plan, it would give these people something that they can look at and determine if it's feasible or not.
The other thing that we're basing it on Scott is Coquett, Georgia. Again, I keep saying that, they've got a two hundred seat facility that they bring in two and a half million dollars to the city.
Linda wanted to see L D O's four guys who sing opera. Made me drive her all the way to Alpharetta, Georgia. Anybody ever heard of Alpharetta, Georgia? It's in the middle of nowhere, and there ain't nothing there. But it's within thirty minutes of Atlanta, and ten minutes of Macon, not Macon, but Marietta. They have a population density.
Not Coquett.
That made it work at Alpharetta, I don't know.
Coquett's two hundred miles from here.
It's amazing that they were able to pull it off then without that population density. I do believe there's a businessman out there for exactly what you all want to do. The work's already done, they've already gotten the grants, they've pulled it off.
Let me ask you this, though. Why should St. Clay save Manchester? Give me one reason.
I think so you should.
Well, you're saying that we could, you're saying that we could do. Why can't we have cooperation? Why can't the city try to save its sale?
I think, I think if you, if you look at what we're up against right now, that the Y M T thing hung around the city's neck. It has really restricted the city's ability to do anything. We've got a million dollar debt, almost, and we've got a five hundred thousand dollar lawsuit. That's a million five hundred thousand dollars that the city don't have. CDs are no. And it's not, it's not that anybody here, I will respectfully take exception. I know every member of this council wants to be progressive, but they've gotta have something to be progressive with. And we're in the hole right now.
If you're in the hole, you need people in here in every one of these buildings. You need to fill every building down there with a business. But, but with people, how am I gonna do it? Who said that?
I am.
Well, how does any place do it? What kind of incentives you have for any business come to Manchester? What are the incentives?
You think this council ain't been trying to do that for years?
Well, what incentive do you have? If I'm gonna come to Manchester, what can I expect?
Let me tell you what they did in Paducah.
I don't know what Manchester first, what is Manchester?
Paducah is an example of what can be done. You have some empty buildings, that's true. Paducah had an empty district. They turned it into, they bought it. They renovated all the buildings, and they gave all these. all these people that did weaving, carving, painting, they gave them one year free...
Amen.
One year for taxes...
Amen.
And then they started paying for their buildings.
Okay, let's look at that.
And they renovated our place. But if you count them up, we've not got that many empty buildings here in town to work with. Look at it, where are they?
Well, they're, they've turned into slums, they've got people living in most of them.
But I don't think that there's one building on the square, there's only one store around on the backside that's open over here across from Kentucky Mountain House, and one or two of those stores.
Well, let me ask you this thing. How many places, what is...
There's six right over here.
I just want to say, how many people shop in Manchester? Where do you shop at?
For what?
In Manchester, in Manchester, not Clay County, in Manchester. How many people shop in Manchester here?
I shop in Manchester.
Where do you shop at?
I shop at Bruce Willis. I shop at IGA. It's, it's Manchester.
But if you go, if you go to any restaurant in London, it's packed with people from Manchester. You go to Walmart, it's packed with people from Manchester. You go to Lowe's, it's packed with people from Manchester. People in Manchester don't have no reason to shop in Manchester. There's nothing here. And as long as people don't want nothing here, you're never gonna have nothing here. Give somebody a reason, come over here and open up a store, or open up a deli, or open up...
I don't, I don't disagree with you, but now let me ask you something. It's easy to say, "Give people a reason." Let me ask you for those reasons. What are they?
I don't know. You said, "Well, God, if they give them free rent or something..."
Well, there's, there's a rent...
Maybe taxes?
There's a rent incentive.
Free water?
There's tax incentives, and there could be something like free utilities, but what else? That would bring enough people to shop...
A theater maybe would bring them down here.
It, when it was open as a theater, it did.
It didn't. You're talking about, theater's not been open here, Scott, 30 years ago?
No.
No, 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 no.
Okay, hell, it's been open there eight years.
It was off when Russell...
But I mean, it wasn't, no, it was...
Your real dilemma is to put in digital broadcast equipment and cameras and stuff, the projectors and all, talking about probably a quarter of a million dollars to make that place able to show today's movies.
I don't, I don't think they're talking about a whole lot of showing movies. I think they're talking about having plays and concerts and gospel singing and stuff like that. And it don't have to be a moneymaker, it just don't need to be a loser.
That's true.
I will tell city council, we do that every Sunday, gospel music. If you all want to come, if the law is staying in town, they come to church, we do gospel music.
And it's free.
And it's free. Yeah.
I'm gonna show that, like I say, I do feel passionate for Manchester. It is my home. I would love to see it do better than it's doing right now. And it's never gonna do any better until you get people that want it to do better, and they have to work at it to make it do better. You can't be satisfied with what is happening in Manchester. You can't, you can't be satisfied and saying, "I think Manchester's heading in the right direction." You've got to do something different. That's, I'm gonna let you, like I say, I don't have no property down here, I don't have no dog in the house. What I do is I'm doing out of the goodness of my heart to make Manchester a more beautiful place, a place that people might want to come and spend the evening, spend the weekend or something like that, come for an event, but I can't do it, Stay in Clay can't do it. I mean, it's gonna take everybody getting together, fighting for the same thing, fighting for the same cause, joining hands, saying, "Hey, let's all get together."
100 percent. I do agree with you, but it's gonna take everybody, though.
But obviously, devil's advocate, so we can't expect him to hand money blindly over without him looking at the situation.
Well, see, I think you have to hand down a price.
Thank you, Tony. At least one of you is sensible.
And then go after grant, and see if you can come up with a way back.
I agree, but don't let Stay in Clay be the savior. Don't let, we listen, we can't be the savior of Manchester.
Let me tell you one thing, too. The reason where we're at right now, because everything that comes up, let's get a grant. I mean, that's all you hear is, "Get a grant." We gotta do something for itself. I mean, that's, that's one thing that has to be done. Okay, let's, let's go on to the swimming pool, prior to the swimming pool. Okay, we applied for a grant, land and water grant, for $75,000 matching. They called Senator Stivers, told him we'd got it. He called me and told me we've got it, and then six weeks later, we got a notice, they turned it down. Okay? We tried to apply for a CDVG grant for 165,000. Guess what? I was almost assured that we was gonna get it, and guess what? We got a letter, it's turned down. So we got nothing going down the pool right now.
Do we have the 75,000 that he set aside, Lord?
That's, that's through the county judge.
Yeah. Well...
We don't have it yet.
Did they give any reason for why the grants were turned down? Eventually, they sent it down?
We not got the, we got, on the, the one did, the 75,000, because they had more projects, they had...
Were, were there your projects to fund what we had?
But now, the 165,001, we've not got the actual official letter on it yet. But we was told, and this is not, it's not that the grants wouldn't fill that right, because we got a consultant firm, professionals that filled out the grants. But anyway, that's where we are on the pool.
Well, places where we turned down, what they said, they...
Well, we've not got the notes, the official...
How do they know we're turned down, then?
Because they called them, and they said we...
They called you?
But they told you you're turned down, didn't tell you why?
She said they're not gonna send a CDVG grant. She said that she had had a conference with some of them, and they had told her, they was like, "Well, Manchester's not got their letter, you know, have they got the grant?" And he said, "No," said, "There was, there was more priorities ahead." So, I think that simply the pool for people is what I say.
Why didn't we go down there?
Well, we was, we was pretty much told by Robert that they would be funded.
Well, now, the judge says he's gonna give 75,000 in February.
Well, this is February. He ain't giving us nothing. It's our money. He's just prioritizing what we can get.
Well, I mean, Robert brought the money.
Yeah.
And it's prioritized. He dropped the prioritizing to a lower number than what it was. It was number three.
Yeah.
But he says that he will come up with it in February.
Yeah.
This is February.
Yeah, but the 75,000, it's not enough to get started on a pool.
We have to take, still take something, and we need to fix the pool, and I think that, I think the citizens, the citizens in county, city, wherever, that's all we've heard, is, "Please fix that pool," because there's a lot of kids that really enjoy that. And we've got that campground down there, those parents have called, and they're like, you know, "We would camp all summer long if you all had the pool ready so people could play." I say do it for the kids and the kids in the city, in the county, city, wherever. I don't care, just work together.
Well, do we have the funds and not cashing in the CDs to do the pool?
We had it, we done had it, yes. I mean, you're supposed to remember, since I've been here, we've not had an increase in nothing. There's not been an increase in nothing, snow, wet, except the water rates, and on the insurance rate, Art Rice said it in 1963. It's the same, been the same since then.
You increased the bar, though.
Yeah.
We in Delaware, man. Yeah.
If you, if you would annex some territory, you could have enough tax dollars to do some of this stuff.
Don't mention it.
No, it's a term. I mean, that's what way you get money to do things with. That's how you build your population.
Yeah.
There's no question about that.
Does Promise River even allocate any funds?
Well, they's got a promise to support, it's just a promise.
But now, there will be some money coming out of this government initiative.
But you've got to have the matching funds to get it.
That's it.
We need to start on the pool, though. If we want it open by summer, it needs to be started. We need to get preparation and get it open for these kids. It's going to take quite a while.
Do we have, we try some money to...
It's about a 150, around 150,000.
We would try out the free dinner beds, but it was like...
What was Robert talking about when he told me he had given? I jumped him over the pool, and he said, "Well, I, I gave George extra money."
Yeah, it's the 75,000, but we ain't got it.
No, not that. He said he gave, he gave the city more money.
No, he didn't. We've not got anything directly from Robert. Directly. It's all coming...
Yeah, we need to ask Robert again, because he told, said, "When I said to ju, you need to tell the judge he needs to give us that money." And he said, "Well, I've already helped George something on insurance." What'd he do?
I have no idea.
Well, when we go to City Night, we need to, we need to get Robert over and say, "Tell us what's going on."
Let's try.
And again, that's a week from tomorrow night.
You need, you need Robert in a private meeting. You do not need to try to get these answers from Robert at City Meeting. It'll be too wild. You need to, you need to...
No, I never said get it from him, I said talk to him back, Scott.
No, I know, I didn't. I said, I don't think you can get that kind of information on a night like that. You need to call him and give him a chance to come sit down with you and ask him in a calm atmosphere. At that big meeting, you know, you'll get promises, and I'll hope to help, and I'll do anything I can, and he'll meet it, but it's not fair to really try to focus on.
He's supposed to, we, we are, he's supposed to set up, set us up to meet with some people that does give the grants that day of the City Nights sometime early. And we, I did contact him today, we just heard this last Friday evening about the other grants, and I did email him today, and he's not emailed back yet, to see what's going on.
Well, could we set an appointment with him like Wednesday afternoon?
Well, that's what I just got through saying.
I know, well, we've got a large delegation that's gonna be there.
Yeah.
And that would be good. Stay in Clay's gonna be down there, I'm assuming some of you are, so that, you know, that would be...
Well, I tell you why we didn't get the grant. There's places that have lobbies, and they go and lobby for that money. And if we don't go down there and try to get that money and make a contest, you won't get it.
I figured it was...
We feel like we got Robert down there, but he's got the whole state.
Yeah, I know. But he, he told us very, pretty much that we was gonna get it, just like he's told these other girls on this, money they applied for, he's told them they're gonna get it too, but I wonder now if they're gonna get it or not.
Well, we don't know what's gonna come until the budget comes out.
True.
We need to wait to see what's in the budget.
Lobby spend the law.
But you know, that's just, I think that's so, I mean, you all really do. Well, that's what they get paid for. I don't think about the money they spend.
That's all I've got on the swimming pool and the other building. We gonna go up there and look at the building?
Yeah, we're going, Scott.
Mayor, do you intend to reconvene after you look at the building?
We need a, we need a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, we need to, yeah.
Adjourn, and...
Adjourn, and...
You don't have to vote on it, adjourn.
Well, we're not adjourning all the way, we're just adjourning here and go to the...
Well, you're asking what you're gonna do.
So we're coming back there, right?
Jack, we are coming back here and...
Barbara J. Ocher, Dan Healy, Matt Nard, Johnny Martin, Dr. Rice, Dr. Rice, E. Robinson, yeah, we're adjourning.